Mr. Shee?
Here.
Ms. Eriko?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mr. Brusher?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
All President, Mrs. Pink.
Opening Statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies on which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 3, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. So this is gonna be our last meeting of the year, so for the school year, so we're gonna have our traditional annual student recognition. So, Mr. Popescu.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Oh, come on, hello, everybody. Sorry. It's always a great honor to stand here, and this is the third and last student recognition of the year. The way it's going to work is if you, when you hear your name, please stand right where you are. I'll have principals come up here and announce it. If you wish to be noticed on ESN-TV, you should turn around and look right back there. He's waving at you back there. That's where you're gonna look to see your face on ESN-TV. Not yet, soon, though. We ask you to please respect all the award winners and wait to the conclusion of the student recognition portion. At that time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Shee for a resolution, and we could all be dismissed at the same time. Are we good? Thank you. We're gonna start off, I'm gonna bring to the podium for some special awards, Principal of Herbert Hoover School, Mr. Brian McGrath.
So I'd like to thank Mr. Popescu, Mr. Saxon, and the entire board for the opportunity to come here tonight and to recognize some very special students. I'll do a very brief introduction of the Wingman Program. Out of tragedy came a program that has changed the lives of many students across the country, but most importantly for us, for the students here in Edison Township Public Schools. Mrs. Beth Maroni, who serves on the Board of Education, teamed up with a gentleman who suffered the ultimate loss, Mr. Ian Hockley. His son Dylan was tragically killed in Newtown. And out of that, he has put together a program that's aimed, is very simply, to include all students in groups and to make them feel as if they're a real part of the school. We know many of the students who were, unfortunately, the people who've been involved in those types of events really felt excluded and did not feel a part of their school, and as a result, Mrs. Maroni worked really hard to bring the program in, so I know there's a couple things you want to say about it before we get started.
Good evening, and I hope to see all of you at the September meeting, because this is quite a crowd tonight. The Wingman Program, which Mr. McGrath mentioned, is a social-emotional program that was brought to almost every elementary school in the district and to Herbert Hoover Middle, and we're spreading out next year to more middle schools and the two high schools, hopefully, is a social-emotional program to help children, you know, with, learn how to feel empathetic towards others and to include other children in all facets of school life. But, Mr. Hockley and I also think there should be an educational component. So this year, we had our first writing contest, and there were three categories. There was poetry, short story writing, and essay writing. And we had from Edison over seventy-five entries between those three categories, and we have middle school awards and elementary school awards. So, Mr. McGrath is going to read those out to you. Thank you.
So we'll start, we'll start with the students from Herbert Hoover Middle School. When you hear your name, if you could please stand, if you could hold your applause until the end of each category. So, first-place winner for the poetry contest was Victoria Charles. Second place was Shravani Joshi. Third place was Divani Mashki. If you could please stand. We also had Gabriella Engholm, who took home honorable mention for our poetry contest. Let's give her a round of applause. Our short story winners were Lea Steinlof, first place, Aksa Kowalji, second place. Please stand. I will also be asking the following students who participated from our elementary schools to stand. In the elementary poetry contest, from Benjamin Franklin, we had Nina Stalhanji, first place; Ridi Chabra, from Martin Luther King, second place; Nisha Patel took home third place from Ben Franklin. So please stand. Give them a round of applause. In the same category, for honorable mention, we would like to recognize Lila Vandula from John Marshall, Sharia Takal from James Madison Intermediate, and Oryef Ajiboro from Lincoln. If you're here, please stand. From the short story category, we have Tina Sherwath, first place, from James Madison Intermediate; Ardaja Vajai, second place, from John Marshall; Matthew Shalas, third place, from Benjamin Franklin. Same category, honorable mention, we'd like to recognize Seiya Sharash, Gudavelli from John Marshall; Avi Patel from James Monroe; Nikhil Loji from Martin Luther King. Please stand. And the final contest that I would like to recognize those participants who won is the elementary essay winners, and we have Sharona Sharma, first place, from Martin Luther King. We have Trisha Panchangamath from James Madison Intermediate, who took home second place. We have Anja Rot, third place, from James Monroe. And then finally, our honorable mention, Ashlyn Dzoza from Martin Luther King; Nea Nerjarud from James Madison Intermediate; Rikka Dashakar from James Marshall; and Yuma Amir from James Monroe. Please stand and be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. At this time, I call forward from Woodrow Wilson, Ms. Blevins.
Thank you, Mr. Saxon and the Board of Education, for taking the time to recognize the achievement of these amazing students. It is my honor to recognize the following students and advisors from Woodrow Wilson Middle School. Winner of the State and National Cyber Security Poster Award, Sanjay Ravishankar, Advisor Melissa Molnar. The National Winner of Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center Poster Contest, Arush Kirkheja, Advisor Brian Romeo. New Jersey Division Two State Champions Odyssey of the Mind, The Team, Sohang Sethi, Vasisha Vumidi, Quentin Ferraro, Ramritvik Gadamsedi, Shloek Patel, Inoshtela Sam Sethi, and the Advisor, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Judets. Under the advisement of Ms. Lanzafama and Ms. Mako, FCC LA, First Place New Jersey Gold State Leadership Conference, Peer-to-Peer, Abirami Jaya Kumar, and Kavya Khanen. Second Place, New Jersey Gold State Leadership Conference Personal Patchwork, Vivian Lee. Second Place, New Jersey Silver State Leadership Conference, Toys That Teach, Shivangi Corey, Priyanka Mirji, Tazin Sohu. And under the advisement of Ms. Hurwitz and Ms. Kraus, the National History Day State Competition National Qualifiers, Reva Anritkar, Amol Bengardi, Dia Nar, Sargam Mandal, and Prisha Magoo. Again, congratulations to the wonderful Woodrow Wilson Middle School students, and congratulations to all the students tonight receiving awards.
Thank you, Ms. Blevins, and now the Principal of John Adams Middle School, Ms. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Popescu. Thank you, Mr. Saxon and the Board of Education, for providing such a wonderful opportunity to recognize students tonight at this meeting. When I call your name, please stand. If you'd like to wave to the camera and get your couple seconds of fame, please do. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Redding and Mr. Spurnell and the First Place Regional Tournament, Third Place State Odyssey of the Mind Classics Leonardo's Workshop Award recipients, Ria Sansguri, Niva Shah, Tashani Mukherjee, Arush Mishra, Ansh Doshi, Ankith Kunduro. Second Place Regional Tournament Odyssey of the Mind Classics Leonardo's Workshop, Sophia Aurora, Mida Valori, Navya Jain, Ashmi Ghosh, Bhavini Pandey, Yavan Vias, Marika Jambudi. Third Place Regional Tournament Odyssey of the Mind Classics Leonardo's Workshop, Justin McClosse, Arun Lakhiela Hall, Amruth Nadapamali, Ethan Lin, Ryan Lin, Ronak Sataranjanai. I'm doing great with the names, right? Second Place Regional Tournament Odyssey of the Mind Opposites Distract, Vasnul Palasmadram, Jansy Patel, Sai Shivan, Ishal Faruko, Kashish Badarwaj. Congratulations. The CJMEA Region Two Intermediate Choir, directed by Ms. Gamboa, the following students, please stand up. Avinash Arvind, Riva Ballario, Ronit Chakrabarti, Casey Decker, Nihon Dagala, Gurika Daman, Siti Dubey, Arshia Ganesh, Sophia Han, Sriha Ayar, Ariyan Jena, Navya Jain, Navya Joshi, Nitya Khansan, Satwika Kota, Siddharth Lakuto, Sanjana Madhkar, Krish Nambyar, Shrada Rahul, Aditya Singla, Aditya Srinvasan, Trunchita Tenkolkar, Shivank Tewari, Shwita Venkatesh. Congratulations to the NJACDA, NJMEA, All-State Junior High Honor Choir, also under the direction of Ms. Gamboa, Avinash Arvand, Casey Decker, Anish Darum, Navya Jain, Ariyan Jena, Navya Joshi, Siddharth Lakatu, Sanjana Madhkar, Krish Nambyar, Bhavani Pandey, Aditya Singla, Mida Valori, and Yavan Vias. Congratulations to the ACDA National Junior High Honor Choir, also with Ms. Gamboa, Anish Darum, Tarunya Mayalavahan. Congratulations to Ms. Martin and CJMEA Region Two Intermediate Orchestra, Owen Way, Gabriel Chan, Sophia Aurora, Ryan Ahmed. Congratulations. NJMEA Intermediate Region Orchestra, Owen Way, congratulations. And our final category tonight, we're very proud and honored of these students and their advisors. This is a particularly prestigious award for being selected as a showcase school for PBSIS, or Positive Behavioral Supports in School. These students and these advisors are really the glue that holds this program and initiative together, and I'm very, very grateful for all that they've done to help bolster the positivity within our school community. Congratulations to Ms. Tanzi, Ms. Epstein, Mr. Hetrick, and the following students, Aliyah Adams, Fiza Ahmed, Jamar Bowen, Sana Craig, Gershell George, Lucia Georgie, Janavi Kusik, Rama Khan, Sansita Kumar, Jasiniyalan Gan, Mahi Mahicha, Kayla McIntosh, Annika Metta, Mia Obandno, Brianna Petricelli, Sherwin Putti, Susaraj, Paris Raymond, Jalen Saret, Lindsay Small, Janay Solomon, Lilani Tang Sinad, and Jackie Abisola. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine, and now from JP Stevens, Ms. Polakowski.
Good evening, and congratulations to all the students, advisors, and coaches receiving recognition tonight. It is my privilege to introduce the JP Stevens students. We'll start with our athletes. On behalf of Coach Dukobi for Girls Lacrosse, earning GMC All-Conference and First Team Girls Lacrosse Defense, Jordan Feraccio. Coach White in Volleyball, earning First Team All-Conference, First Team All-Red Division, Jonathan Bernstein. Coach Marzano in the Baseball Team, earning recognition for GMC All-Red Division, Joseph Young. Earning GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, Shiv Patel. On behalf of Coach Petty for Softball, earning GMC All-Red Division, Alexis Metivoy. Earning GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, Emily Tavares. On behalf of Coach Bizano for Boys Tennis, earning GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference, GMC Champion Second Singles, Krithik Khanan. Odyssey of the Mind, congratulations to Advisor Mr. Parikaden, earning first place in the Regional Tournament, Ramadish Pandi, Kavya Patel, Nandini Razada, Robert Nevis, Arav Joshi, Sri Charan Submaranian, Victoria He, April Wang, Rahul Singh, Anthony Kim, Kevin Gee, Vipul Seti, Rebecca Fang, Kanise Pan, Jana Lee, Samhita Seva, Stephanie Bahan, Lucia Choi, Hari Raj Krishnan, Raj Patel, Nami Jain. And the State Winners, all earning the ability to advance to the World Finals, they're all going to the World Finals. Congratulations to Manav Jhadeja, Sam Yakmetta, Arya Patil, Jay Patwarden, Gurav Balani, Driti Valori, Varsha Edigunta, Jenna Gomez, Jyoti Garub Skwaran, Michelle Lu, Shanin Yan, Christina Chen, April Wang, Rahul Singh, Anthony Kim, Kevin Gee, Vipul Seti, Rebecca Fang, Kanise Pan, Andrew Chung, Nathan Zhang, Ancha Das, Lucia Lu, Michelle Huang, Manav Argawal, Hamza Azim, Jana Lee, Samhita Seva, Stephanie Bahan, Lucia Choi, Hari Raj Krishnan, Raj Patel, Nami Jain. Congratulations. Congratulations to the FCC LA Advisors, Mr. Joy Laird, Ms. Dematia, and Ms. Shapka. These are the students that earned first place at the FCC LA State Leadership Conference. Aditya Rankin Swarin, Jaclyn Trotman, Nicole Marone, Jivananatha Mongoran, Neil Patel, Clara Azedadigan, Pragya Gupta, Pratika Manjmu Dar, Melanie Mendonka, Ishana Martri, Sophie Patel, Kushti Shaw, Yipsa Singh, Angelina Budala, Ramitha Ravishankar, Karishma Shenoy, Sana Javari, Arnav Prabala, Aditya Kudwa, Genya Manarini, Artava Belsari, Srinivasan Ramakrishnan, Ritesh Kasetti. Congratulations. Serving in State Office for FCC LA, First Vice President, Karishna Shenoy; Vice President of Parliamentary Law, Hardik Viguru; Vice President of Leadership Development, Shorab Toddkar. Earning first place in the National FCC LA Cluster Meeting, Isabel Swetowsky, Shorab Toddkar, Srinivasan Ramakrishnan, Vardhan Tandon, Hardik Viguru, and Krishna Shenoy. First place for the State Leadership Conference, Gabby Cruz, Rakkan Kasam, Andrea Maris, Rakshana Saralaj, Amag Kudwa, Neil Prabhu, Navya Gucci, Nikita Kopri, Ayush Gupta, Ayush Soni, Ariyan Narvakar, Ani Aravindan, Amruth Abandi, Rashida Delal, Triya Gugali, Ananya Ranghaswani, Kushi Patel, Katie Fallon Roych, Swetha Raj, Ria Marali, Vishvan Tumala, Navleen Cowher, Aditi Manny, and Simran Jan Ganasetti. Congratulations. First place for the Leadership Conference, Athava Belsari, Srinivasan Ramakrishnan, Vitesh Kasetti, Karishma Shenoy, Aditya Rankin Swarin, Hardik Viguru, and Vardhan Tandon. Congratulations to Mr. Huaman and the Guitar Ensemble, earning NJMEA Honors, Belakana, Mahakana Kala, Dhruv Iencar, Emily Huang, Mary Ann Gelsim, Juan Carlo Ledesma, and earning NAFMEA National Guitar Ensemble, named to that ensemble, Belakana. Congratulations. And congratulations to Mr. Lee and the Choir, being named to the NJMEA All-State Treble Choir, Metta Gora Kiran, Gabrielle Lee, Kriti Sashena, Vendanchi Sharma, Rea Teladivara, Driti Valori, Vishwani Vinokana, Selena Wang, and earning NJMEA All-State Mixed Choir, Meg Nadass, Shrada Haraharan, Suved Joshi, Varun Kari, Varsha Karthik, Viraj Kumar, Ayush Patel, Mukand, Ramakrishnan. Soloni Shaw, Rahul Singh, Mashid Tomar, Elton Vaz, Shree Shvalor. Congratulations to them. And the grand prize winner for the Harmonian Coral Society High School Competition, Varun Kari, and for academics, being named for Governor's School Award for Science, Irene Kwan.
Thank you, Ms. Polakowski, and at this time, I call forward Mr. Ross.
Good evening. So great to see so many wonderful students, their families, their advisors, their administrators out here to celebrate what's great about Edison's education on both sides of town. I thank Mr. Saxon and the board for giving us this opportunity today. We're gonna jump in with the athletics. First Team GMC for Coach Schumacher from Lacrosse, Ms. Gabby Moreno. In Volleyball, First Team All-GMC White Division, Andrew Cho. First Team All-Red Division, for Coach Vinny Abine, Christian Sammy Cruz. In Softball, All-Red Division, Jessica Hoover. For Golf, the GMC All-White Division Team, All-GMC Golf Team, and GMC Golf Tournament Champion, only a freshman, for Coach Brian Murta, Mohit Sanagavrapu. It's nice, it's nice when a freshman says he's going to Pinehurst for a summer vacation. That's pretty impressive. For Coach John Krajunas, in the girls' track and field, we have First Team All-Division, Cynthia Brezny and Junna Chakravarti, Casey Coletto, Karen Herrera, Genesis Hopkins, Gayathi Narayanen, and Eden Sellers. Yeah, Ms. Hopkins. And First Team All-Division All-Conference, Cynthia Brezny and Gayathiri Nayyarayyan. Moving on to DECA. Regional Conference Finalists, we have Anshul Kumar. First place overall, we have Jeffrey Zhu, Sajdul Rajagapalan. Finalists and qualifiers, Desha Kanakar, Karan Desai, Mehir Patel, Kriti Nanagori, Deep Katara. Fifth place overall finish qualifier for International, again, Banat Karal. Qualifying for the International, second place overall, Karina Mohapatra. And a State Officer Candidate for DECA, Zananda Saravanakumar. For the DECA Executive Board Achievement Level Membership Campaign, we had Samir Bouyan, President. Officers Madish Samarathu, Kriti Nanagori, Sajdul Rajagapalan, Desha Kanakar, Erica Kim, and Anshul Kumar. Also in DECA, first place overall for the Business Finance Series and for the Role Play Score Business Finance Series, our valedictorian, Samir Jain. In the Middlesex County School Board Association Unsung Heroes Award, we had two, as Mr. Edward Lynn and Jonaki Chandra. Also this year, we had the honor of having a perfect ACT score coming out of our STEM Academy under Ms. Kristen Soy, that's Ashar Adroja. Sometimes it's a little rude to say you save the best for last, but when you come to the Edison High Choir, I don't think that's going too far. Before I talk about the choir, though, I just want to thank Mr. Popescu for his leadership in the arts. It's a part of what makes our school and so many of the schools here great, and he was one of the first people I saw speak here on a night like this, almost ten years ago. So thank you, Mr. Popescu, for all your work on that. So, thank you, Mr. Perspecky, for all your work on that. Okay, if I could have the representative from the choir that's coming down real quick? While they're coming down, I'll start reading some of the names. First place Superior Rating, Best in Class Women's Choir Division, Treble Choir, Belavochi from the Festival Disney National Choral Competition, Samantha Bell, Hannah Martin, Alexis Kuzka, Jessica Momani, Ria Singh, Alea Taha, Melody Wheeler, Emery Zrakerowitz, Sneha Balarri, Jamie Brennan, Jing Yi Chen, Emily Danowitz, Danielle Dick. What are you laughing at me for, Shannon? Madison Flores, Denise Lopez, Ashprey Patel, Angela Tuoh, Eileen Chen, Elise Encarnacion, Lauren Carvasky, Nicole Lee, Katie Lee, Emma Mohanti, Isabel Nalepa, Sajid Rajgopal, Stephanie Belisario, Evelyn Marie Kabatu, Rebecca Engholm, Maddie Good, Lucy Knox, Sana Mahmood, Ramyer Rathakrishnan, Jordan Reed and Kayla Wilson.
Hi, my name is Shannon Recqua. I'm the president of the Edison High School Choir, and we just got this plaque to thank the Board of Education. Not all townships are as lucky as we are to have people who are so supportive of the arts, so we would like to let them know that what they do for us does not go unnoticed. And we'd also like to give them a special thank you for helping us with our busing situation this year on our Disney trip.
Mr. Perspecky, I think she's going to replace you next year to do this. That was pretty good. Ms. Recqua, fantastic. And our last, the first place Superior Rating, Best in the Class Quadruple A Acappella Choir at the Festival Disney, we'll go through these names a little slower. Ajman Ahad, Gracie Idu, Stephanie Belisario, Sneha Balarri, Evelyn Marie Kabatu, Kendra Candido, Lawrence Chen, Eileen Chan, Joanne Chen, Lauren Dick, Rebecca Engholm, Garrett Garcia, Jason Garcia, Anne Garcia, Madison Good, Matthew Hosters, Zakiya Jones, Lauren Carvasky, Vania Khan, Kaylee Knott, Jade Gzimbo, Alexis Kuzka, Nicole Lee, Denise Lopez, Antoine Lunique, Katie Lee, James Lynch, Tae Martin, Malika Manikant, Angela Martinez, Emma Mohanti, Isabel Nalepa, Valika Nyack, Viraj Patel, Shria Prakash, Joel Pratt, Jordan Reed, Francesca Romius, Rianne Reyes, Christina Roman, Marcosario, Samitha Sangjaraju, Alyssa Scott, Xavier Short, Terron Spears, Hannah Steinloff, Kenny Suarez, Percy Seela, Joshua Teiza, Michaela Terranova, Evan Tybok, Sebastian Torres and Anela Tuoh, Pooja Vedul, Irwin Verola, Fiazah Vazam, Melody Wheeler and Emily Zdakiewicz. Great job, everybody. You are what's great about Edison High.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and how about one big hand for everybody for tonight? And before I turn it over to Mr. Shi, I'd just like to say something more personal. This is my last time hosting the student recognition, and I did some calculations. Over the last 12 years, I've done this 36 times, that comes out to 17,352 students being recognized. So, in case you were wondering, that's what's great about Edison.
Thank you, Mr. Perspecky. Thank you for the service you gave to our district for the arts and the arts program. So move on, we have a resolution then, can you read that?
Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent Schools, the Edison Board of Education hereby recognizes the outstanding efforts and accomplishments of the aforementioned students, and be further resolved that the individual resolutions honoring each of the students be presented to the students.
All right, can I have a motion? All right, Mr. Erichoff, Mrs. Conway.
Just a second.
Mrs. Conway.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes.
So we're going to have a five-minute break, then we're going to go back to our normal program. Thank you.
Are you going to draw a second?
Okay, so we're going to resume our meeting. So first up, we have the approval of the minutes, May 6, 15, 20, 28, and the Board Secretary Report. Can I have a motion? Motion for meeting minutes and Board Secretary, okay? Mrs. Maroney and Mrs. Conway.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
This is for the minutes and the Board Secretary Report.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes on everything but abstain on check 15085.
We're not on that yet.
Oh, we're not?
We're on the minutes.
Oh, okay.
So Board Secretary Report.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erichoff?
Yes, on everything but the May 6 meeting, I was absent.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the public comments, but before we go on to the public comments, there is some slight changes to the agenda. So, Ramoni, you want to talk about one of the items first, yes?
Good evening, everyone. We have some changes to our personnel addendum, and I'm going to talk about two of them. One involves an employee, Jennifer Martins. We're going to table this from Section A1 regarding resignation. And number two, the second change that I'm going to request that the board table is regarding Maria Martinez, this is a retirement. There is a resolution that's on the updated Personnel Addendum Number 23, which is a resolution to approve extended health benefits, and this is tabled pending further review from the Division of Pensions around the personnel issue.
Motion to table both of those and add the green agenda.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Mrs. Conway. So we're going to table the item 23, we're going to table the JM resignation. So, all right, can I have a motion for the, just the personnel report with the revision?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Erichoff, Mrs. Maroney.
On the personnel only.
Personnel only.
Not just the changes?
Just voting on updating the agenda, and then you'll vote on the personnel agenda after this concludes.
Oh, oh, so we're going to vote on this one first?
Just voting to add it to the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're going to, I'm sorry. So the vote is to add the items onto the agenda first?
And the table.
And tabling the two items.
Okay.
We're clear? We're clear?
All right.
Okay.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes on everything but Roger Varun?
No, we're not.
We're just voting on adding the green agenda to the personnel agenda and tabling Jennifer Martins.
We're not voting on the item yet, next.
Right, but that item's on the green agenda.
No, but we'll add it onto the agenda, then we're going to vote on the whole agenda. You can do that later, next time.
Okay.
We're just modifying the personnel agenda now.
Well, I understand. I was approving everything on the green agenda except for that one there, because when we get to the regular agenda, I have an issue with that one and another one also.
Oh, okay, all right. Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erichoff?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, now we can open up for public comments on the whole resolution. So anybody comments on the resolution, please come to the podium. Resolutions only. See none, we're going to move on. So, we're going to first vote on the personnel report. Can I have a motion on the personnel report? Okay, Mr. Erichoff, Mrs. Maroney.
Okay, this is on the personnel report, so if you have anything you want to vote on us at the time.
Yeah, that's what you come.
Okay, Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes to everything but I abstain on two items for Travis McCarthy.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes on everything except for Roger Varun. I think that's an important position, I know nothing about that until tonight, really. And Nadine Fishoff, teacher of physical education. I asked for some additional information from personnel, and I didn't receive anything, so hopefully next time I get the required information, so I can vote on the rest of the personnel issues.
Yes on everything else?
And everything else, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erichoff?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
So move on, we have the administration. See, the first is the adoptions, appointments of the 2019-2018 school year, the policy bylaws, three-year comprehensive equity plan, on-site clinical services, statement of assurance for high school voter registration, approval interim superintendent's contract, settlement agreement with MA, settlement agreements BT and AT, sidebar agreement with ETBOE and ETEA, and on the curriculum instruction, we have field trips, we have professional development, professional development, pupil services, out-of-district placement, professional services. So everything in the administration, everything in the administration, okay? Do I have a motion? Okay, Mrs. Maroney, second. Okay, Mr. Brescher, administration only, all these items.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erichoff?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes.
All right, next up, the curriculum and instruction, we have field trips, we have professional development, out-of-district placement, no, did I say this one already? Okay, I'm sorry, the move on is just the finance, the finance resolutions. Can I have a motion for that? Okay, Mrs. Maroney, second. Okay, Dr. Chen? Finance resolutions.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes, but now I'm going to abstain on check 15085.
150 what?
85.
85?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes on everything except resolution number 55.
She on it.
School wants a resolution.
All right, Mr. Erichoff?
Mr. Erichoff?
Yes, for everything except item 55.
Got it, okay. Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
All right, so next up, we have a, we have three committee reports. So, Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mrs. Pan's not here, Mrs. Conway, can you do the honor?
I can find it.
It's all the way in the back. Yeah, that one, yes.
The Curriculum and Technology Committee met on June 5 at 1:00. In attendance was Shannon Pang, Yuna Chen, myself, Ralph Barca and Beninda Mahaba. Technology, the committee discussed the purchasing of new Chromebooks for grades two and three. Grades two through eight teachers and staff members will get new 14-inch Chromebooks. The committee decided that only one card of Chromebooks would be purchased for every two classes, students will share. The committee decided that no new iPad purchases would be made in grades K and 1, students will need to share if there are not enough for the class. Under textbooks, the committee discussed the scope of the ELA pilot in elementary school for the 2019-2020 school year. We also updated a potential pilot for science, and the committee asked about the pilot and textbooks for the Algebra II honors class. And at 2:00, we adjourned.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, Community Relations Committee, Mrs. Maroney.
The Community Relations Committee met on May 30, 2019, in the Ed Center. In attendance were Paul Saxton, Felguni Patel, Ralph Erichoff, Daniel Mashad, Richard Pepe, Patrick Cassan, Jeff Bowden, Jean Parentoni, Marcus Rosenau, Gail Polakowski, Ralph Barca, Deborah Gulick and Patrick McDonald. Items discussed, the committee watched a six-minute video done in support of the Fort Lee referendum. The video was succinct but got the message out. PowerPoint, both the video and PowerPoint could be put on the internet for viewing. We could do soundbites for other media such as Facebook. In the video, we would like to have, we would have to get recognizable people from the district to speak. Mr. Saxton would like to use the PowerPoint that Mrs. Parentoni put together for the board meeting in May for viewing on the website. Presentation teams will go out to one of four designated sites to go over the details of the referendum. Mr. Erichoff suggested that a board member attend each of those presentations. Two band concerts are planned for this summer, August 24. Chartwell's is donating hot dogs and drinks to educate parents on the details of the referendum. Mr. Bowden suggested that we attempt to help unregistered voters get registered before the referendum date. Students are willing to help with this. Ms. Polakowski said that forms are distributed in social studies classes for students to register if they are of age. Talking points, right now, Mr. Saxton has about 30 talking points which need to be honed down. Mrs. Gulick and Mrs. Maroney agreed to refine the talking points. Mr. Cassan will also contact police and fire departments. Mr. Cassan will also be talking to the VFW teachers and Mr. Bowden. Each principal should create a phone chain of parents. Mr. Cassan suggested that we reach out to former students who are famous, such as Mark Polansky, the astronaut, and Susan Sarandon, the actress, as well as Hall of Honor inductees. President of the PTA, PTO should be brought into a meeting before the end of the year. Mr. Saxton suggested ordering large buttons that say 24 on them to generate discussion on the date of the referendum. The committee watched the video of the overcrowding in the schools taped by Mr. McDonald, which was very compelling. Mr. Saxton is going to contact the PTA, PTO presidents to get a meeting set up. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. I think the meeting already took place, right? Okay, so next up, FF Committee, Mr. Brescher.
We had a Finance and Facilities meeting on 5/28/19 at 4:00 PM at the Education Center. In attendance, Jerry Shi, Richard Brescher, Yuna Chen, Paul Saxton, Dan Mashad, Rich Pepe, Ken Taylor, Chris Conklin, Patrick Cassan and Ralph Barca. The first item, Mr. Conklin presented a proposal for five additional registered nurses to be stationed at the elementary schools that exceed a 700-student enrollment that currently have one nurse. We also then talked with Mr. Barca where he presented the three server options for handling of the Genesis application when the district converts the financial software to Genesis. The most cost-effective option is to purchase a server and provide onsite support as opposed to a hosted solution. Mr. Barca is concerned about the turnover of our district technicians also. Neighboring districts are hiring them away from us after we train them because the other neighboring districts are paying higher salaries. Mr. Barca proposed not hiring additional techs but provide increased salaries to the existing staff so we can retain them. Mr. Cassan presented a sidebar agreement for the ETEA non-certified contract in which a district could opt for some of the current 12-month security guard positions to become 10-month positions. Scott Mahalik from SSP Architects presented the process for power purchase agreement for solar projects, which would include three professional firms. The committee requested that the district forward the sample specifications to our attorney to see if the district would be able to legally enter. attorney to see if the district would be able to legally enter into a PPA by binding the project on its own, by bidding it. Mr. Taylor presented a proposal submitted by the BAPS Temple on Woodbridge Avenue by Ben Franklin School in which roadway improvements including traffic control lights and turning lanes would be installed at no cost to the board. There has been a request to install a four-foot chain-link fence in front of Ben Franklin School at no cost to the board. The committee is requesting the fence be an aluminum picket fence or a better appearance for the school. Number seven, Mr. Taylor discussed a proposal submitted by Chartwells to make improvements to the kitchen at Washington School which would alleviate the need to serve the student lunches in the hallway. The project cost is $129,788, and it would be, and it would use part of the $500,000 investment that Chartwells pledges with their food service proposal. The committee approved the project. The committee reviewed the superintendent's recommendations for the 2019-2020 exempt salaries and after making a few modifications, approved the listed salaries. The meeting adjourned at 5:50 PM.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, the upcoming meetings. We're going to the summer months, so we do our annual combined meetings. So the next meeting will be on July 29th, towards the end of July. It's in the Board of Ed Caucus Room at 7:00 PM. And the following, August, it's August 26th, at 7:00 PM in the Board Ed offices. So now, we are opening up for board member comments. Any board members? Okay, Mr. Brescher?
Well, two things. One, I'd like to thank our Curriculum Committee, I guess, for making those technology modifications for our young students. It's something, I guess, that we've heard from parents and the community, and it's something that they looked at, and I agree with that decision wholeheartedly. The other thing I'd like to say is that our arts in Edison are very, very important. It's what makes our students so well-rounded here. It's what really makes them great overall is everything that we do offer. So I take the arts that we have here very, very serious, and I believe that the people that we have that are running our arts program are phenomenal. Our internal candidates that we have, I don't think can be beat. I'd place them against anybody in the state. I was a little disappointed because of prior commitments that I couldn't make the John Adams Shrek the Musical. They actually have a DVD for it, and I'll be honest with you, you can go to some high schools and you will not see high schools that put on plays as well as John Adams does. And I really have to give Nikki Malone credit for that. The amount of interaction that she has with the students, it's almost like every student in the school is involved in this play. And what happens is, the children become so passionate that then they move up to J. P. Stevens, and it's what gives you the great plays and everything that you see here, and I'd like to see that continue. I really appreciate the work that she's doing in our middle schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Maroni? Oh, no, Mr. Ward, right?
Recently, Lyndon, thank you. Recently, the Lyndon Noah School had a very successful leadership day. The students, the faculty, and the administration put on a program that was excellent. Their guest speaker was the Commissioner of Education, and he spoke wonderfully.
Bring that a little closer. Bring the microphone a little closer.
Okay. And he spoke wonderfully to the students and spoke at their level and really encouraged their leadership skills. So it was a very successful day at Lyndon Noah. Is that better? Okay, sorry. Okay. Number two, Mr. She?
Yes.
Okay, it's the shared services agreement. I'm back to that. The April, at the April 15th public meeting, the board voted to approve the shared services agreement between the Township of Edison and the Board of Education. The agreement had been presented to us for the first time in January as a fait accompli. Between mid-January and April 15th meeting, the full board had never met to discuss the terms pro and con of the agreement. My concerns were many, and I expressed them at that meeting. The following facts are an update. There are members of the Board of Education who have dual allegiances and would have done well to have recused themselves when the vote was taken. As a means of securing our consent, we were assured in January that the agreement would only be for the 2018-19 school year, and that come July 1, 2019, the township would take over and assume the costs. That won't happen. The SLEO 2s and security, the 20 SLEO 3s, rather, that's one from 2012 to 15 to 18, mentioned in the contract are nowhere near. The last count, the Edison Police Department had three. If the Edison Police Department has to hire part-time SLEOs to enhance the numbers, that would double the cost to the Board of Education for equipping and training them. Be mindful, all costs are accompanied by a 10% payment to the township, an 18.53% payment for salaries to the township, and their third and fourth parties. All 26 of our security personnel will be state-certified, and per Mr. Cassan, he is providing ongoing appropriate training for administrators, faculty, and students. Additional armed security in the schools previously approved by the board is still on the table. Except for two schools, all double locks on classroom doors are installed, and the two remaining schools will have them by the end of the school year. The radios: All of our buildings are, currently have two emergency buttons each with instant contact to the Edison Police Department. State-mandated panic alarms that the legislature agreed would be paid for with the $500 million bond issued passed in November, and a state revenue windfall of $377 million should be available if needed. The police radios: Those that were still not functioning when we signed the agreement in April, although a good backup, need to be a priority, as Mr. Cassan has an alternate plan for all personnel to have instant response to an invasion or an emergency by September. Automobiles: The Board of Education owns no cars for personal use, only maintenance vehicles and one delivery van. The Board of Education should not be obligated to violate its own policy by purchasing cars for the police. The township, however, does own a fleet of at least 44 automobiles, a van, and a truck. And if the Edison Police Department needs extra cars to provide 24/7 protection for all the citizens of Edison Township, it might do well to look inward. Salaries: Paying the police through the township, the Edison Police Department, and a third party, now a fourth party, you can add seacoast business funding in North Carolina to extra-duty solutions in Connecticut, and adding 18.53% to the salaries not agreed upon by us is out of line. Presently, the terms for the athletic events are egregious. $58.88 per hour with a three-hour minimum. That's $176.64 obligation for openers. If it goes over three hours, it's a fourth hour. This has been reduced from a minimum of four hours plus $5 for travel. Agreement costs: There's no way we can control the costs. All facets of the agreement are open-ended, and none is contracted or negotiated by the Board of Education. The agreement costs started out in January at $1.3 million, reduced after Mr. Cassan entered the talks to $800,000 million with some shavings, and subsequently brought back up to $1 million even with the shavings. Currently, the agreement reads $200,000 escrow to the township which must be maintained, $1 million cost listed on the agreement, $7,208 for upgrade of police radio tower, and $1,500 to implement a cradle point rotator, bringing the total to $1,208,708, which is pretty near the original $1.3 million. Recently, a newspaper headline quoted the township partisan saying, "The Board of Education would have hundreds of, would save hundreds of thousands of dollars under the agreement", with no explanation. I don't know how the person arrived at the figure, but it made the township look like it was doing us a vast service. We are the cash cow, and they make no bones about it. In none of the terms of the agreement is the township accountable for any lapses. It is peppered with terms such as "make reasonable attempt", "provide adequate whatever", and "relying on availability". None of the terms is defined. If the number of SLEOs does not meet the 20 in the contract, the schools will do without security, and it will just have to be okay. The township is answerable to no one. There is not a scintilla of evidence that our students and staff are safer under this agreement than under our former plan, which, by the way, has never been rescinded. The bottom line here is that none of the facts of the agreement is sufficiently developed, workable, or even necessary. The 20 SLEOs will provide an average of four hours per day per school, and when we subtract the half hour for the Edison police person at the beginning of the shift and a half hour at the end to go from and to the police department, we will have just three hours per school per day. We can hire, train our own security, arrange our own contracts on our times, and maintain our ability to handle the school security issues in the schools. The security agreement with the Edison Police Department, which was in place before the shared services agreement was introduced in January, is a sane, efficient, affordable, and practical response in which there are clear lines of responsibility and authority. That agreement has never been rescinded. It is still viable. A most significant fact is that after their having received our signatures on the agreement two months ago, we had not, as of our caucus meeting on last Wednesday, received the signed agreement from the township. The signed agreement reached us after I called it to the attention of the board, and an assumed rush to action ensued. This is a sign to us of their laxness. I am therefore again suggesting to this board that we rescind the shared services agreement while we are still ahead and not saddled with radio towers, cars, contracts, and costs not beneficial to our security. Mr. She, I am making the motion that the Board of Education rescind the shared services agreement.
You'll have a second. Okay, Mrs. Conway? The roll call, then, to rescind the agreement.
All right. Right, it's a vote to rescind the resolution that we passed back in, I believe it was April.
April 15th.
Okay. Dr. Chen?
Are we gonna put in place this other thing here?
Wait, wait a second. No one's seen it. So, I had a conversation with you today, and we had multiple conversations on this It's not the perfect agreement, let's just put it that way. But without any other agreements in place, this is the only agreement we have right now. So I cannot vote to rescind this agreement right now unless we have another agreement that comes out better than this one. And the current agreement is that the board has 30 days to notify the township to cancel this agreement. So we can cancel anytime as long as we give them 30 days. So, you know, we have said at different meetings, unless there's something out there that can replace this, then we can consider rescinding this agreement. But without the other additional contract, that will be better off with all the costs and everything, because we don't know. It's all, you know, thinking, but if there's, we have some hard numbers, yeah, we can always come back and rescind them. All we need to do is 30-day notice.
Point of clarification.
Yeah.
So there's a motion pending to rescind the agreement, and I just want to check, and we didn't receive a copy, a signed copy back?
Received it on Thursday.
We did, the district received a sign. So at this point, there is a valid executed contract between the parties supported by resolutions passed by the board on April 15th and the Township Council on April 24th. So the board cannot rescind at this point as it's currently under contract. The board would have to execute the provision of a 30-day termination of the agreement per the terms of the contract.
Question?
Yes.
If both parties have now, if both parties have now signed it, is the township up and ready to enforce it? Do they have the proper number of people to do the job, the SLEO 3s? Are they ready to go, or is it not in effect yet, and we're just at the agreement stage? Which is my biggest question about this whole thing. If we're not to the point of enforcing it yet, how can it be a viable contract? Has the township gotten the proper number yet to start? How many? Are they going to be able to? We need, how many people? 20 or 10? And it makes a big difference whether we outfit 10 people doing it full-time, 20 people part-time. We don't know any of these variables, and this is what my biggest question is. And I'm sure that we don't know the bottom line yet of this contract, and that's the scary part. And the other thing is the administrative part of it. The township is charging us a 10% administrative charge. Do we know what that stands for? Are they hiring multiple people to administrate this program? The 7.75% that we're being charged through the prosecutor, are we being put into the same tank as the township that had the problem with the overtime? Or is this overtime? If it's not overtime, would we still be charged the 7.75%? And these are just questions that I just started in January, and I really don't understand the whole concept. And initially, I thought the township would be taking this over because it's an act of security. But if we're pushing for security in our schools, is it a shared expense initially, and then they will take over? Or is this something that's going to be in our budget every year but with unknown factors involved? Mr. She, this is what I'm questioning at this point, and that's why when Teresa brought it to mind, all the variables, I don't know if, I question my yes from the last, from April 15th, to be very honest with you.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd like to have Mr. Brescher explain some of this, because this has been going on for quite some time. Again, is this the best contract? Absolutely not. We definitely tried to waive the $10 from the township. They would not budge. And we had multiple meetings with them, and we said, "You guys will be using our facility". And we had multiple meetings with them, and we said, "You guys will be using our facilities, you know, for recreation stuff, we're not charging you. Why are you charging us another ten dollars?" But they don't want to budge, and, yeah, ten percent, I'm sorry, ten percent on that. And the other seven and a half, you know, so the whole thing, you know, I'll let Mr. Brecher explain that to the public.
I guess overall, no agreement is perfect, and this one is far from perfect. We spent about eight months trying to work something out with the township, and this is the best agreement possible that we could make with this municipality or this administration and with being a partner with them. There are other choices that are available to us. The Board of Educations are allowed to arm their own personnel. You know, technically, we could go hire our own Class Three. It wouldn't be called Class Three, but it would be the same guy if the guy's name was Johnny. Johnny would work for the Board of Ed as opposed to working as a Class Three. You know, and you would set up the same requirements that are required. That does take time, and that is a direction that Teresa was just talking about here. But for right now, we have this agreement in place. The children will be protected come September. We are going to have to pay these additional fees. The township could forego some of the fees. The other fees, the prosecutor will not forego until the Board of Education, the Township of Edison can show the prosecutor's office that we can be responsible. He does not have faith in us, and that's why the fees are in place. Had nothing to do with the Board of Education, had to do with the township signing and with monitoring, you know, bills and how things get billed out. So, by the, some of the processes that we're putting in place now with our new purchasing agent and everything, I believe we're going to be able to show the prosecutor, you know, fully that we'll be fine, and I think they'll forego that seven and a half percent next year, unless Teresa comes up with a plan here that incorporates all of this and we go in another direction. But for the time being, this really is the best deal that we possibly could put together with the township. Otherwise, we wouldn't have any armed officers in the schools. And it was my recollection from that meeting, from the couple hundred parents, I think that were in the room, I believe we were at Lyndon Al at the time, that's what I heard over and over and over. And that's what I believe that the residents wanted, so that's what we worked towards.
Just one question. If the agreement is in place, do they have the personnel ready to go?
It's like anything else, like, let's say you were going to start up your own bakery, right? You, on day one, you don't have all the staff there. So, do they have it all now?
I would.
No.
If I'm opening a bakery, Mr. Brecher, I better have my bakers.
Well, here, let me tell you what happened. What happened was they were prepared to hire all of their personnel, and they did, and they lined up about twenty people. And then six months passed between attorneys and everybody else going back and forth, and these people aren't sitting there going, "I'm waiting to go work in the Edison Public Schools." So, what happened was they went and got jobs somewhere else. So, we were down to only three people. So, until that agreement got signed, you know, people don't believe that we're actually looking to hire them, so they're not applying. Now that we did sign it, I think they went from three to like seven, just in like the last month alone. So, I'd say by September, yes, we should be, you know, fully staffed.
Yeah, again, this is for the next school year, because we are finishing up, you know, right now, last week. So, we really hope that, you know, they can have the folks that on September first for the new school year, right? So...
Just a few points, Jerry.
Yes, go.
We never received a signed agreement until this week, and Mr. Cassane has the signed agreement. The board still doesn't have the signed agreement. And the signed agreement didn't come to us until after Wednesday night, when I pointed out to the closed session board that we did not have an agreement at all. There was no agreement with the township. And then somehow, quickly, we got an agreement between Thursday and Friday. I don't know when Mr. Cassane picked it up or when they delivered it to him, but it was after I made this announcement that we did not have a signed agreement. Because it doesn't, it just appears like it is not important to the township. They're going to get ten percent on everything that we do, and they're going to get eighteen point five three percent on everybody's pay, and the police persons do not get that eighteen point cent. That goes to the township and to those two corporations, one in North Carolina and one in Connecticut. We should be hiring our own people, and we should start now, just like the township is starting now to hire. They were down to three. They have to get up to twenty by September, according to the agreement, and there's no penalty if they don't. If they only have ten, it's okay. And if they can get twenty people, but they have to make, hire forty because they need full timers, they don't have full timers, then we have to pay for the training and for equipping those SLEO police officers. And that should not be our job. That's money that's taken out of the education pot. And it's going to hire and pay people that we have no control over. They sign in at the police department, they sign out at the police department, and we pay them in between. And if we can't get twenty full time, we can get forty full, part time, and we have to do the same thing. We should not be paying for the township's radio, and we definitely should not be paying for township automobiles. They have a fleet of forty-four, at least forty-four automobiles over there parked. And let them acquire four from the township. Work it out among themselves. They should not come to the Board of Education. We're not an auxiliary purchasing agent for the township. We have enough to do to run the Board of Education. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
You know, I do agree with you, and we're definitely looking for a new administration in the township when it comes in January, and things will change. Right now, we're, you know, this is what it is, unfortunately. It's absolutely not the best deal, but we got to get the kids protected coming into September first, and we have to have something in place.
Mr. Shee?
So, we, okay?
Mr. Shee, we have something in place. Before you came on the board, we had an agreement with the police department, and I itemized that agreement on April fifteenth, and that agreement is still on the table. We have not rescinded that agreement. It's still there, and the police have to hire police, or we have to hire police, one or the other, between now and September. And we should do that job. They should be our people, and they are responsible to us.
Okay, so what to the others? We cannot rescind the...
The board can take whatever action it wants. I would not recommend that the board rescind as the agreement has been executed by both parties with supporting resolutions. If the board wants to execute the termination provision under the agreement which requires thirty days' notice, the board could vote to pass a resolution to enforce or enact that provision with the requisite notice. That's the better option if the board wants to terminate this agreement.
What costs would be incurred?
There's no cost under the agreement, other than, the agreement indicates that it may be terminated with thirty days' notice, and any buildings or costs that would have incurred are due, you know, within a certain period of time if they have been accrued. I don't know what would have been...
So, we would have to vote to terminate rather than to rescind?
Because the agreement has already been accepted by the township and executed.
Teresa, change your motion.
You have to have a public hearing first.
Oh.
So, we can't do anything. Public hearing? I know, she wants to make a motion to terminate, we only have to have a public hearing.
You just have to provide notice, the board can terminate by resolution. The board would need to discuss and figure out why you're terminating, what's the reason.
Right, so, drawing a meeting. So, we can't do anything?
And what about the motion?
The motion, you can't take any action, not a motion, right?
The motion should be withdrawn, or...
The motion should be, yeah, withdrawn or...
You have a second on the motions.
Yes.
The motion is now up for discussion, or discussed, but discussion's concluded now. The motion is, is it withdrawn or proceed to the vote? That's a recent, correct, she made a motion.
I'm sorry.
I don't think she heard you.
What do I have to do? Withdraw my motion and then correct it to terminate the agreement? Is that...
The correct action is to terminate the agreement. The board needs, though, I recommend have reasons for terminating the agreement, and as a group decide that. Normally, we would have a closed session discussion. We would decide the reasons as to why the board seeks to terminate, and then put it up for a vote at the regular meeting.
So, we would have to go into closed session to do that?
Well, we should. We should discuss what are the reasons for the termination.
We should have discussed this agreement back in January when it came through to us. The full board never discussed this agreement. Now, all of a sudden, you want to discuss it?
I've just given you the best legal options. If you rescind today, that may not be held viable since the agreement has been accepted by both parties, and it's in fact a fully executed agreement supported by two resolutions. The board rescinding its April fifteenth vote will not seek to terminate, and the agreement provides clearly that you have thirty days to terminate for any reason, provided you've provided written notice. So, if the board wishes to terminate, or can pass a resolution to terminate the agreement. If they ask questions as to why or what are the reasons, I'm not certain that the board has articulated as a group what the reasons are for termination. Typically, you terminate agreement for lack of performance, for delivering poor services, or issues around that party's obligation to us. We haven't started this yet, so I don't know, or the board hasn't articulated as a group and voted to say, "Here's our reasons for terminating."
Is there a surety bond for this?
No.
So, we can't do anything?
I'm sorry, I did not hear what you said.
My recommendation is the board, this motion be withdrawn, the board discusses at the next caucus in closed session, and determine if it wishes to terminate this agreement as a board. You still have time before this goes into effect in September.
But in the meantime, would they be hiring someone?
Yes, maybe.
So, now there'll be costs incurred?
And they'll be buying cars.
There may be costs already incurred from...
I'm sure they order radios already, I'm sure they order guns already, I'm sure they order vehicles.
I'm sure they do.
I'm positive of it. All right, so we have to reasonably rescind.
Withdraw. If she doesn't, then the board will vote on it.
Yeah. So, I don't know if we might be...
So, Teresa, there's an option here. You can withdraw the motion, or we can move forward, have the board vote on it. So, it is your call. The recommendation is to, we have, we're discussing closed session, we got our plan together, you know, how we want to do with this agreement.
So, I can withdraw my resolution. I would just want to make sure I have this clear. I can withdraw my resolution, or I can change the motion to terminate the shared agreement, right? Or we can go into closed session and delay it another month. But in the meantime, the township has the right to go ahead and get their radio tower and purchase four cars that we have to pay them for? This is a bad situation from the get-go. And we are, no matter how we figure it, we're losing.
Jerry, can I, I'd like to say something. I voted no on the proposal back when Mrs. Ward voted no on it, and my reasoning was that I don't think the Board of Education should be buying cars for police. I just don't. And the other thing, Mrs. Ward is the best board member in terms of studying the facts, the figures, the history, and I agree with her a hundred percent. If we go forward with this, we don't know where it's going to take us financially, but I think it's going to take us to a very bad place. So, I just wanted to give my support to her. And the one other thing, too, that I keep thinking, because I'm so deeply involved right now with a person who lost his child in a school shooting, you know, I don't know that that's the answer, to stop a crazy person. And I just think we're spending a lot of money that we could be putting to other use. So, that's my two cents.
All right, what are we doing? So, we...
All right, so here...
Go ahead with...
Here are the options, here are the options, just so we're all clear. You can vote on the motion to rescind. I would not recommend that because you have a fully executed agreement. I've said that a couple of times.
Excuse me. It's only fully executed because they sent the signed execution over to us at the last minute, when they knew I was going to do this.
It's executed and it was supported by two resolutions, both one in April here fifteenth and one April twenty-fourth of the township. That's number one. So, the board, if they're going to seek to end this agreement, the proper way to do it would be based upon the terms of the agreement. And if the board wishes to proceed, I would recommend that we have a closed session to discuss the legal impact of the board terminating this agreement based upon its provision either now or at a subsequent meeting, because the board should be apprised of what could happen, and I would only do that in closed session, provide advice as to the impact of terminating this agreement in this manner. So, if the action needs to be taken tonight, and the board wishes to convert this motion, or Ms. Ward, you wish to convert it from rescission to a motion to terminate under the terms of the agreement, I'd recommend that we convene for a closed session to discuss the impact tonight. If the board wishes to put this off and discuss at our next regularly scheduled caucus this issue, we can do that as well. But pushing forward to rescind now, I'm not recommending that, and I can discuss that further in closed session as well.
Well, as a matter of fact, it can't be rescinded now, right? Okay, so, is there any way we can stop the township from going ahead and spending money until we clear up our end of the issue?
So, the township could have spent money and performed services under this agreement, or could not have. We don't know. And there's no way for us to control whatever they would have spent up until the point that we terminate, because the provision states either party may terminate with thirty days' written notice, and it goes on to further talk about the parties shall have no further obligation except for services rendered and expenses incurred before the effective date of the termination. So, even if you were to terminate tonight as thirty days out of additional fees for services, you would accrue under this agreement.
You have to vote on Teresa's resolution, that's on the table. Can I see it withdrawn?
Either that's withdrawn or they voted on it, Mr. Sack, it's correct. So, Ms. Ward, what would you like to do? Are you going to withdraw the rescission or push forward?
Well, I have to withdraw the motion to rescind because it's too late now. However, I would like to make a motion that the board terminate the agreement as soon as possible and have a meeting to do so. The full board should have met on this between January fifteenth and today, and we didn't. So, I don't know what the best motion movement is for the board. Either way, we lose. So, I would like to withdraw the motion to rescind the agreement and then think.
No, no. Listen, like I said, I support Teresa's idea. Myself and other board members were involved in this whole year-long process and to make whatever deal we have come up. What I would recommend is that the board members that did not partake in that, the ones that are not for this, for them to meet with Patrick, our security person, and come up with a concise plan that protects all the students, and have them present that to... and have them present that to the board because I can't in good conscience rescind or cancel the contract with the town until I know that we have something in place. Just because you don't like what we have here now, I don't like it either, but I can't rescind it so that the children aren't protected. So if, if those board members could meet, and, and you guys can meet, like, you know, whatever, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week and probably come up with a plan with Patrick so that by our next meeting, we have that discussion and you guys present the, the, the plan that you propose. Um, I don't think you'll get a lot of resistance on it.
I agree with Mr. Brusher. Uh, this plan has been worked on for over a year. Every board member, except for Mrs. Conway, because she wasn't on the board, promised that we would have armed police officers in our buildings. So now they go back on our word because everyone up here voted yes. Uh, Mrs. Chen, I believe, wasn't on the board either, maybe, but, um, but we need to put our, uh, money where our mouth is to protect our staff. You did vote yes to vote to have police officers in our school. At that meeting, that three-hour meeting, four-hour meeting, we were at one o'clock in the morning at Lindedall, every single board member, yes, yes, yes. Metal detectors, wands, police officers, cages, walls. I mean, we, we heard everything that night and we came to a conclusion that we need police officers in the building. And you approved them last year when we had them in the building, when we were paying the police department whatever fee we were paying. So I, unless I hear a better plan, I can't rescind this agreement.
And the motion and the, uh, the motion to put, uh, armed police officers in the schools is still on the table because the whole board approved it. It's just who hires them and who pays them and how much. And why do we have to pay the township and the police department and two corporations, one in North Carolina and one in Connecticut, um, a fee for the police we hire? We're perfectly capable of hiring our own police. We've done it for years at school events. And it can be done.
Question.
And the whole board should meet.
Question. Mr. She.
Yes.
At that meeting, which I did attend, they agreed to have policemen in the schools. And till the end of the year, we did have policemen in the schools. Is that, was that terminated? That agreement? Or does that still happen? Remember, there was cops. There was policemen in each.
We were paying police officers last year. If you remember, Dr. O'Malley wanted police officers in the school.
Right.
We used our emergency reserve. We paid them about six hundred thousand last year.
Correct.
For the, for the balance of the year at that time.
Do we have an agreement?
I don't remember seeing an agreement.
And then what happened in September? So now we don't have police in there at all?
In September, we came up.
So there's no agreement?
There's no agreement right now, no. Except for the slay agreement that we just talked about.
Yeah, but that's not in effect. So, right? So this past year, we have had nobody in the schools.
Correct.
Security guards, yeah.
Just security guards. That's what I was asking.
All right. So what's Theresa's motion?
She already, she's, she rescinded. Withdraw the motion.
Okay, so.
So I, I think that, you know, we, we should, we should discuss the whole board. Just, uh, you know, I, I agree with some of the things that Theresa said, you know. Um, I, I don't think the school should be involved in security, but unfortunately, this, this is the agreement we have right now. Unless something is coming out to replace this, um, which you guys can all work with Patch, Patrick, uh, starting tomorrow, uh, come up with something that, that can replace this and save more money. We'll be all, every board member will be, you know, open for, for that, for that discussion. So unless we get that, um, this is what we have right now. Yeah, you can have a committee. People can volunteer today, whoever they want to be on the committee. And we'll, we'll do it after, after, after today's meeting. Whoever wants to be on the committee can send me an email, uh, as long as four and no more than five, then we can have a committee. Any, any less than five, you know, we'll do, yep. All right. So we're going to move on. Um, we'll open up for public comments. Yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Did we finish with board comments?
Yes. What, you, you, do you have any?
I have one more.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, uh, tonight was a wonderful, tonight was a wonderful evening, uh, celebrating all the wonderful things that students do in, in the district. But on June fourteenth, last Friday, I had the privilege of attending the James Madison Primary School Flag Day Ceremony, which has been in existence since nineteen eighty-six, where the first graders hold a celebration of Flag Day and second graders are awarded for, uh, their submission of an essay. And the topic of the essay for years has been, what does the American flag mean to me? And the American Legion comes and gives the awards out. And I found it to be an exciting morning because back in nineteen ninety-three, my son had received one of those awards. And it was a spectacular come together of all the first graders singing, uh, a variety of national songs and the second graders being awarded. And I was, uh, just so thrilled to see the, uh, excitement among the children and, and the parents trying to keep them in their seats with all the phones up in the air, uh, filming the, uh, the morning exercises. So I would like to, uh, appreciate James Madison Primary for continuing such an excellent celebration. Thank you.
Thank you.
On June sixth, um, we held a law day. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. On June sixth, uh, we held Law Day at J.P. Stevens and Edison High, which was a program that involved a municipal court mock trial with, and involved a D, DWI charge. There were several local attorneys and judges who volunteered their time to participate. I volunteered at J.P. Stevens and as always, I was very impressed by the students there. They were, you know, they picked up on things very quickly and it was a very, very great event. And I wanted to thank all the attorneys and judges who volunteered their time and especially thank, uh, thank Sapnashah who organized the event. And I wanted, I was hoping that we can continue this program in the future to bring, um, awareness to the legal profession. And it, and on a side note, it was extremely hot at J.P. Stevens. We need to do something about that.
I think we had it both schools, uh, J.P. and Edison High. So Edison High is probably as hot as well. Okay, so anybody else on the, on board? Okay. All right. See none. We open up.
I think we had, we didn't come to closure with respect to the police. We left it floating up someplace. And I think we have to have a clear direction for the committee. Yes, participate. Anyone, it's open. But what are the specific goals of the committee? And if, if you don't lay it out in terms of goals, activities, and process, we're going to end at the same place that we are right now. So that understanding has to be accepted by the total board, mapping out the future direction of the committee and then move in that, and move in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Agreed. All right. So any other board member comments? Any administration comments? See, now we'll open up for public comments. Anthony.
Anthony DiAmro, fifteen Rodax Circle. Um, well, first off, I want to thank Mrs. Ward for honestly just bringing this to our attention and, uh, I think bringing checks and balances. It's just legitimate question. So thank you. Um, this whole deal, in my opinion, sounds like a mess. Um, I would say this. This is not a partnership with the town. This is a rip-off. That's what it is. And I hope that this new committee, honestly, you come up with an alternative plan and you tell that, tell the town to go to hell. That's what I would do. Ten percent, seven percent. It's a, that, that is not a partnership. Um, the town has some nerve to be charging you guys that. So I just, that's my business. Hopefully, you guys figure it out. I think protecting these students, though, is the number one responsibility of all, uh, at it, for, for the board. So with that being said, I just have three quick questions for you. I could just go through them if you just want to answer them afterwards. Um, do you have a timetable, for the prefab buildings at FDR? And, uh, will they be ready by the next school year? Also, in case they're not ready, do you have, uh, alternative plans? And is there a plan to, uh, deal with the traffic nightmare there? I heard it's, it's really, really bad. So is there a plan to, uh, to deal with that? Thank you.
Two questions. It's, it's three.
It was three. Yeah, it was three.
It's only two.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, in case, in case the prefab buildings weren't ready, I mean, uh, do you have a plan in place?
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Okay. All right. So we have been, uh, oh, watch out, watch out. Easy, easy. Lot of liabilities. So, uh, we, we have been following out on, uh, contractors, uh, you know, on this. We have been guaranteed, right, September first? Mr. Brusher? I've been asking them multiple, multiple times. They have guaranteed on September first. I hope we don't have to have back plan, backup plans, but if we do, we can put the kids where they, they are right now. Um, you know, if, if we miss it, it'll be a very short period of time, uh, that we can, uh, bring them back. As far as the, the traffic, yeah, that's what we want to do. We want to provide more subscription buses to the, um, the parents. So we don't have to have so many drop-offs. As I said, uh, for us to break even on the old, uh, we need about thirty, what is it, thirty-five, thirty-six students. Just imagine if we can reduce thirty-six cars going into that complex, the three schools there. That will help a lot. And, uh, we hope that we can have more.
We were given the assurance in terms of the modules that September one is a definite. And we would have that. We also had ten, you know, um, additional ones over at.
What do you, Wilson?
At Wilson. And we're positive again that we have those ten. Four to six of them will be occupied immediately. So the backup plan, if the other modules don't come in, we have at least four or five classrooms that would be available to temporarily place. So that's our backup plan.
Yeah, traffic, again, we need a lot of help from the township. I hope, I really hope it's, it's, it's coming. Um, you know, yeah, but, you know, when, when, once the road is outside the school, schools' property, you know, our, our hands are tied and we're definitely looking for a lot of collaborations with the township and hope that, you know, um, we'll have, we'll have better collaborations. Okay? Yes. Joe.
Joseph Johnson, four oh seven Durham Avenue. Uh, first off, I would just like to congratulate all of the students, uh, who are recognized today. Uh, it is always a wonderful time when we can recognize our students for the fantastic jobs that they do. Uh, next, I would like to just say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers who celebrated yesterday. You're welcome. Uh, next, I have three quick announcements. Um, the first, on May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, um, I hosted the first ever Edison Youth Civics Group, um, at the Minnebyville Community Center in Edison, New Jersey. The goal of the group was to bridge the gap between our community members and our community leaders. Uh, we had our very own Elizabeth Conway and our very own Beth Maroney and Councilman Bob Deal come and share their experiences being, uh, their experiences being an elected official in Edison, New Jersey. And we hope to incorporate more board members and Edison Town Councilmen moving forward. Secondly, on Monday, June tenth, two thousand nineteen, the Lena Harris Foundation hosted its last counseling session with the students of the Lena Harris Foundation Mentorship Program. The session officially marked the conclusion of all Lena Harris Foundation events. I thank everyone who made the program a wonderful success and look in, and, and look in anticipation for what is in store next year. And lastly, on July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, the Lena Harris Foundation is hosting its second annual three-on-three basketball tournament fundraiser at the Metcalfen Sports Bikes in Metcalfen, New Jersey. All of the proceeds go towards the Lupus Foundation of America and the Lena Harris Foundation Scholarship Fund. And all are welcome to, to attend. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
Bill Brunner, two fifteen Lorian Avenue. Through the chair, I'd like to ask Dan, um, on the, um, tuition rates for this coming year, uh, how much money do you generate average for a year under tuition?
I budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, but it's only from the homeless students. We don't, we don't accept tuition students. Uh, so we have, that's in case we have a homeless student who's another, from another district and they're responsible for the tuition and I bill them for the tuition. Or if we have illegal students and we catch them, we charge them tuition. And those are the rates.
Do you ever collect it?
Oh, yeah. We collect it, sure.
I mean, from the ones that aren't, aren't here legally?
Uh, we do, we do collect some, not all. Once they move out of town, we have, kind of, we, we take them to court, though.
Roughly, what do you get? Your net for the year, for a year? Forget what you're budgeting. What do you get?
I budget a hundred thousand. I usually get somewhere close to about eighty, seventy-five to eighty, for the most part. It all depends on it. How many, how many homeless students we have, how many illegal kids we find.
But we don't actually accept tuition students, per se.
We don't have space. If we had the space, we probably would, but we don't.
Yeah, okay. And space brings me to my next thought. On the budget that you presented a while back, the classroom size was estimated at twenty-six to twenty-nine, which happens to be the same thing you estimated last year. Well, how can we have that same if we've got all this overcrowding? Shouldn't the number be up? Shouldn't there be thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three students in a class?
Well, yeah, we do have, if you look at the averages, because we have a range between high and low, but there's also an average. And the average, if you have, I think, uh, this year with three hundred fifty kids throughout all the schools and all the grades, it might go up one or two, maybe. But, uh, the numbers we had were the actual numbers that we generated from our projected enrollment increase.
So it's hard to keep yelling about overcrowding when you're predicting the same classroom size. Getting to my next point, I've been watching on television the last several, um, special meetings that you've had. And, uh, it seems to me that on this board, there's only one person knows anything about construction and construction costs. And that's Rich Brusher. And you're going to lose him on January one. He's going to be on the town council. So we're going to have to fight this thing with no expertise. And another comment that Mr. She made as a cost-cutting measure, um, oh, maybe we can get some house, in-house project managers. Oh, that'll be interesting. Who do we have working for us that knows anything about managing a project off the top of your head? Probably nothing off the top of your head. You have to research it. But, I mean, it seems like a fool's paradise to try to think that you can get some in-house construction manager. Uh, construction is an entirely different area that is not under anybody here's expert, line of expertise, with the exception of Richard. He's limited in some respects by his own admission. By his own admission. To try to pass a bond issue in September for a hundred eighty-nine, a hundred ninety-one, two hundred million, whatever, I don't think this town is going to be that dumb to pass something like that when, as an example of what you've done so far, you received a little over nine, nine million extra dollars, extra, now, not the total that they owe us, from the state for this year. You got, you got nine million more than you thought you were going to get. But you promptly raised the budget by over eleven million. So the people don't really have much confidence in you people being fiscally responsible. There, you did all this with no cutting. You didn't lay anybody off. You didn't cut any programs. It's almost as if Dr. O'Malley hasn't left. He never saw a dollar he didn't like to spend. I think you better look at some of these things very carefully and especially with all this money you want to spend on construction. Uh, the thought I had was that maybe if you, you might modify the public by breaking it down and only bonding portion of it. You mentioned how JP is the biggest project. Fine. Break that out.
Not an option. One shot.
Who the hell's talking?
I am.
I didn't know who was interrupting me. I wasn't quite sure who was interrupting me. Your voice is very soft, by the way, Mr. She. As you keep going, you get lower and lower. Uh, but, uh, you know, maybe split it in half. Do half in September and get things going because we're just talking. We're not doing anything. This is all talk. It's been going on for a few years. This is all talk, it's been going on for a few years now. You want to get something passed, tape, cut it down, cut it in half, get them to pass 100 mil now, get the ball rolling, get your contracts out, get some, so people can see that you're actually building something. Thank you.
Just an FOI, we can hire PMs. A lot of companies already contacted us. We can hire them as contractors for a period of time, right? So just to put that perspective correctly. And we definitely can save money on that. As far as your suggestion on the, you know, splitting them up, no, it's not an option. We can, there's only one shot and it's overdue for the township for a lot of years. And I think it's 10 years ago when we tried to pass a bond referendum, that bond referendum was $160 million, right, Dan, is that correct?
Yeah, there are two questions, but it totaled 162.
Yes. So think about that, 10 years ago, 162, now it's 189.5, right? Anybody else?
Mr. Sheehan, one quick comment before we have the young lady come up. In reference to class size, what throws off that number of 26 to 29 is you have special needs classes, okay, that have eight, only allowed to have eight by law, okay? So if you have, and we have a big special needs population in this district, so if you have 10 of those classes in your building, your numbers get thrown off, they get skewed. So I know in some of the buildings I've been in, there's 30 to 35 in an elementary school class, which is absurd. But because of the special needs laws and restrictions that we have, you're only allowed eight in a classroom. After that, you gotta create another classroom. So that, and we have that problem in my district where I'm at. So if you look at my building's numbers, my class sizes are very low because I have special needs classes, but that's the reason why I think the numbers are a little bit skewed.
But just to add on, if someone was saying that our school, our schools are not crowded, go into our school. Go there. Go there during the day when the school's in session and go there during the time when we're switching classes. Then you come back and tell me our school is not overcrowded, okay? If you have not stepped into the classroom, you cannot tell me that our school is not crowded, okay? Go there, check it with your own eyes, then come back. All right? Yes?
Abhadive Rajan, 143 Jefferson Boulevard. I have a quick question.
Thank you.
I recently came across a video where a school in Iowa had their students go out in the community and help residents with disabilities or elderly help out with their yard work. And for that work, the students received PE credit. So my question is, what can we do to bring something like that here in Edison?
It's a suggestion, we could definitely, yeah, we could definitely look into it and, you know, for PE credit, okay?
I think, I think each state is different. We have to look into what New Jersey requires for physical education. I think there's so many hours that we have to have and there's no substitute for, but we could absolutely look into, like, the health classes count as partly PE. So maybe we could do some of those extracurricular activities outside of the building through the community that would help with those credits. But I think with Mrs. Polikowski coming on board July 1st as our academic supervisor for our middle school and high school, I think she could look into that without a doubt.
And one more question. It actually just came up with the crowding. Is it possible we can hold maybe two sessions, like, not everybody likes to get up at 7:00 a.m.? Maybe start one session early, one session later, use the building for a longer period of time?
It's a good suggestion, but there are, they introduce a lot of issues. You have, you know, the teachers are teaching, the contract, we need to look into it, and also the transportation or that. It's easily said, but, you know, I don't know if the parents actually have the stomach of other two sessions, but, you know, we can look into it, but I think it's probably a long shot, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes?
Matt Revnak, 2S Road, ETA Vice President. Actually, one's a question. We have a few administrative positions that are still open and we're just wondering if there's gonna be like a special board meeting. Waiting till July 29th is a long way off to appoint a principal of a high school, for example, vice principals, et cetera. So the question's been coming up, is there gonna be a special board meeting prior to July 29th?
I think our timing is gonna be appropriate to meet the objectives of the district and implementing the program. I don't have any concerns with that.
Okay. We can look at it, you know, whenever we actually have these people hired, then we can look at the timing and stuff, then, you know, we can make judgment there.
I understand what you're saying, because if it's internal people, obviously transition is nice. And if it's external, they have to give their place of appointment, their days of notice as well.
Yeah, we did put that into consideration, the timing of some of these appointments.
Sure. And actually, if there was a special board meeting, that'd be a good time for you guys to caucus on your security issues. You can combine it. Okay. The other thing is just as a closing, that's why we kind of want to be last. You know, with the end of another school year coming up in a couple of days and graduation, just wanted to wish all the seniors graduating from Edison High School and J.P. Stevens the best of luck in college and military or job market, wherever it is their future lies. And also our middle school students graduating and coming to the high school, et cetera. You know, there is the old saying, it takes a village to raise a child, and it definitely does. The other thing adding into that is we had our retirement dinner the other night and there were four board members that attended and we thank you for your attendance. But we also have to acknowledge the number of retirees in the district who served many, many years here in Edison, from the administrators leaving, retiring from the district, custodial staff, and of course, our ETA teachers and non-certificated members. So wish them well in their future endeavors and thank everybody for their commitment to the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, yes?
I've got two questions. This year, I'm sorry, La Palosa, Richard, I live in Edison, I have a business in Edison. The athletic situation that we have with the baseball field, what's going on?
We are.
Not only that, Mr. Echo knows, and not only that, the busing scenario.
Okay, so two questions, busing and the baseball, yeah.
I could actually comment on both. We had a meeting the other day in regard to our busing. We are making a strong effort to hire additional bus drivers to support our athletic program and co-curricular program.
I know it's tough.
Yeah. So we are working diligently, I know Mr. Rusher has been all over this, because anytime I get a call, Mr. Rusher gets the next call because he's our bussing.
I'll be bothering you, believe me.
Him and Miss Falguni down there is our bussing people, so we are working very, very diligently on busing. As far as the fields go.
Yeah.
We've been very proactive, I think we're gonna be discussing it very shortly. Mr. Mashad and Mr. Saxton went out for prices, not bids, but prices.
Prices.
Rough ideas.
Turf fields.
Turf fields.
Yeah, turf, exactly.
Yes. So we're looking at, this is only a proposal, nothing set in stone, we're looking to turf the baseball field here as well as, while we're at it, the soccer and lacrosse field, the JV. Makes sense, you might as well just run the carpet all the way to the parking lot.
Sure.
We're also looking at doing J.P. Stevens' baseball field, too. But it'd be fair to both schools. So we are looking at the prices, as we speak, we just got the quotes in maybe a day or two ago, and we are definitely considering those options.
Okay, and who would foot the bill on that?
We would take it out of our budget.
Why? Why don't you go to the town?
Good luck.
No, 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 think about this now. You've got Amazon, you've, who bought, over here where Ford was, who owns that? Harts Mountain, who's bigger than Harts Mountain? You've got UPS, you've got FedEx, go for some help.
I'm looking forward for the township to flip the bill, but.
Like, he's gotta get involved, he's gotta get involved.
Mayor has a promise in his State of the Union address that in the township, that he's gonna give the school a couple of.
Pilot money.
You know, I don't know whatever money is for baseball field, so I'm looking forward. So we can pay it, if they want to pay us back, that's fine. But to answer the question where the money comes, the money comes from the savings we have achieved so far.
I wouldn't foot the bill.
That's where the money coming from.
Like, he should be ashamed of himself, he was a player in this town. He's the Olympics, he was playing, he played ball, they all did, they should know better, they should be ashamed of themselves. Edison was always a ball town, always. I grew up in the Brunswick and North Brunswick.
Yep.
And Edison was the top-notch place to be.
Absolutely.
Top-notch.
Absolutely.
Look at it now. Thank God for Edison Boys, because I was a big coach over there for, I still coach. It wasn't for Cal, you wouldn't have a place for home fields.
That's exactly.
That's embarrassing.
Yep.
Have you been, have any of yous been to South Brunswick?
Yes.
North Brunswick. Metcalf has got two rec fields that are turf.
South Brunswick has four or five of them.
It's a beautiful, beautiful complex.
Sandberg Park, yep, I've been there.
Beautiful complex. We should get on it.
Yep, we're looking, definitely looking at it.
I appreciate, I know, I've talked to you about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Any other public comments? All right, I see none, but before we, you know, close the session, I just wanted to brought the attention to the folks that might be listening, that came to the meeting last time. Finance Resolution Number 58, that's a subscription bus, now it's dropped to 550, all right? Just brought the, let the people know. So it's got passed. All right, so we see no more comments. Can I have a motion?
Motion, Doja.
Motion, Doja, second. Okay, Dr. Chen. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.